Good afternoon. We are here for the Natrona County Commissioners' regular work session agenda, Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, one thirty in the afternoon. Our first appointment is with Joshua Bliss, UW Extension Coordinator, and the purpose is general UW Extension programming updates. Welcome.
On Extension, we put together a comprehensive report for you to show the summaries from all of our program areas. So I will start with four H because we're both here, of course. So we have myself, Josh Bliss, who's a four H educator, and then Terry Kip. She is our four H assistant that is county-appointed. She's an all-county employee, and she's one of the ones that was lucky enough to get a county bonus. So thank you again for that. We have Donna Hoffman, who is here. She is our horticulture educator, and she has provided an update for you. The two educators that we do not have here because they submitted for some vacation leave already, that would be Jody Jacobston, who is part of our CVH, Community Vitality and Health Programming, and she has worked really, really hard throughout this entire year. We also have Haley Moss, who has done WORTH, which is Wyoming Outdoor Tourism and Recreation. She has been working diligently to help create connections within not only Natrona County but also the state of how we as a state can properly promote and allow for tourism, recreation, and hospitality as part of what we do in Wyoming. And it is a part of what we do, but she's kind of creating structural relationships that make it last. We also have the CNP Program, and none of them are here today, but we do have Amy Wildison as an educator in the CNP Program, and we have put together some impacts for you on everything that the CNP Program has done. Really, I'm going to turn it over to a couple of people that are administrators from campus, Bridger Faiz, if you could step up, and then Matt Healy. They have some position information updates on some horticulture items that will probably take the most of the time. Thank you for your consideration, and please reach out to me with any questions on the updates.
Commissioners, it's good to be here. It's a, I'm the Associate Director for Extension over the Ag and Natural Resource Group and the Community Vitality and Health Group. And then I have with me Matt Healy, who he's the Associate Director over four H and youth. So in the past, we've always separated our county-commissioner relationships east and west, and I've been managing the west side over the last several years. So I haven't got to meet with you and be in front of you, but we really decided to team up on that anyway because you guys are always teaming up on us when we come to talk to you. So we needed a team approach to talking to commissioners. So you might see me a little bit more than you have in the past. But the one thing I want to talk to you a little bit about, and I did talk to Commissioner North a little bit this summer, a little bit about this, but the horticulture position here in Natrona County had been, well, Donna has been doing that for several years now, and it had been a combination of university funds, county fund part of her salary, as well as the City of Casper-funded part of her salary. We have asked Donna to take a more focused state role as the state Master Gardener Coordinator, and have been able to, starting January one, we'll have the funds from the university to fully fund her salary. So what we'd like to propose is to use a portion of the funds that you are contributing to Donna's salary to backfill Donna's role here in the county with a part-time horticulture assistant that would help Donna and also run the local Master Gardener Program here, be the one that does those yard calls and home visits that Donna is tasked with right now. So I've talked a little bit to the City of Casper about this as well, but really, I think your contribution was roughly seventeen thousand annually for Donna's salary, and the city was about the same. I think a part-time horticulture position at about ten thousand for each of you, so savings of seven, a little over seven thousand for you, I think would make a lot of sense. It would allow us to hire somebody twenty hours a week, and with some flexibility to maybe have a few more hours in the summer and less hours in the winter. But, you know, if we averaged twenty hours a week throughout the year, I think a contribution of ten thousand would make that happen. And it's something, you know, we have some relationships like this with other counties in the state, and I, you know, I've even had experience where a county completely removed this part-time horticulture position. What they found out is those questions don't go away. They just come to other county departments, and so they asked us to put that position back in. So I guess what I'm asking you is if that's something you'd be interested in pursuing further down the line and talking about that part-time horticulture position as a replacement for Donna's contributions to the county. Any questions for me on?
Any questions, Commissioners?
So I'm assuming that would start in FY twenty-six?
Yeah, well, I think it would start, we would like to start it, advertising for it in January.
Okay.
We will, we will fully fund Donna's position in January, starting in January.
Okay. So, I mean, as far as your request from us, it would start in FY twenty-six or would it start right away?
Yeah, when you want the ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, sorry. So we bill you quarterly for Donna's salary, sorry. So we would just change the quarterly billing to that part-time horticulture position and reduce the amount we were billing you. So I don't think it would-
So instead of forty-five hundred, it would be twenty-five hundred?
Quarterly, yeah.
It's kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, you know, we hope to get somebody that is similar to Donna and their qualifications, and it would be great that Donna's here and can help guide that person. So, you know, we can't promise you a replica of Donna. Donna does great work. But, you know, it's been very, a successful arrangement in other counties.
Commissioner Meld.
So you're not asking us to increase or adjust the twenty-four, twenty-five budget? You're just asking that the cycle continue, but you'll be billing at a lower amount? So what we've already earmarked for her salary would indeed actually be less?
Yeah, it would be less, and it would be to a different position. Yeah.
Would you expect that request to stay at that level going on into the next fiscal year?
Yeah.
Other questions, Commissioners? Those are all the questions we have so far.
Okay. So I can, I'll, I can send a job description that we're thinking about and just a written sort of proposal that you'll have to move forward. And then if you can just, I guess we just need a, yeah, we're okay with you moving forward, advertising the position in January, that would be.
Madam Clerk, do you have any suggestions for how to get this kind of wrapped up with a bow?
Mr. Chairman, since it's, there's no impact to the budget, then I don't think we need to do anything formally other than just, you know, a verbal okay. Just to be clear, this employee would not be a county employee. This would be an employee of the state of Wyoming, so that we wouldn't have any of the burden or the extra expense on that part.
Yeah, and it works well that way because then they can, they can manage our Master Gardener Program, and, you know, that really serves you as a community too, so.
Great.
All right. That's all I, that's all I have for now, so.
Tracy, do we need to look at that now or wait until the first year?
I'm sorry, Dave. What was that?
Do we need to look at, go ahead and agree with that now or wait until the first year before?
I think as he's sitting here, it'd be appropriate to approve it today.
Okay.
You're gonna send us the email?
Yeah.
To paper this?
Yeah.
Great.
We're good?
Look forward to it. Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners, and let me know if you have any questions about the report.
Our next appointment is with our Deputy County Attorney, lead appointment, purpose being the NCIT and NCFPD lease MOU.
Okay. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Do you all have any questions about this lease?
I don't think, I don't think we do.
Okay. Not the easiest presentation I've ever given. Can't even screw it up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we are now ahead of schedule, so I'm not sure if we're quite ready for our next appointment. Are we still waiting for a few additional members? Well, great. Mr. Jim Degolia, we sure appreciate you being here today to discuss the AMICO reuse Joint Powers Board matter for an update.
See, I think I'm supposed to get a, something to move the presentation along.
Is there a clicker or?
If not, I've got, did you get hard copy?
We do have, we do have our packet, yes, but.
Let's see. I have never had one of these go seamlessly. I don't know about the rest of you. Thanks. Semper Fi. Okay. I have no idea. I don't see it lighting up.
Commissioners, thank you for the invitation to present on behalf of the AMICO Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board. As you heard, my name is Jim Degolia. I'm on the Executive Committee of the Board. I've been on it for more or less four years. I'm the current Chair of both the Development Committee and the Three Crowns Committee. And so I've got responsibility for trying to help drive our mission forward, which is to be good stewards of the assets that are commonly known as the Salt Creek Heights Business Park and the Flat River Commons, right along the river. And as I mentioned a moment ago, Rob Hurles regrets that he can't be here today, but I'm really pleased to be able to present to you. I think all of you have been here since the beginning of the reuse agreement and the establishment of the Joint Powers Board, so I'm not going to spend much time on that, otherwise, other than to note that the agreement was signed literally weeks before BP purchased the assets of and everything, including the name of AMICO. And the Board, I am told, since I'm not, I've only been in town for off and on about ten years, I'm told that they did a credible job, you know, getting the remediation of the property started. But to be candid, during my tenure on the Board, I've been kind of disappointed in our inability to sell and lease properties and generate more jobs, more tax revenues, and more recreational and other opportunities for the people in Natrona County. And one of the things, a little about my background, I'm a lawyer by training, a businessman by DNA, and I have had a lot of responsibility in public and private companies as well as volunteer organizations, trying to build community and create jobs. And I'm happy to report that in the last eighteen months or so, we've started to get some pretty good traction, that I see the possibility with your and other people's help to start to really generate much more of what I think are the things that Natrona County needs, which include, as I mentioned a little bit, more jobs, more economic diversity, and more recreational opportunities. So let me see if I can get this thing to work here. Forward, so, one of the things I was taught, I was taught in speech was tell them what you're gonna tell them. And so that's it on the first slide, and then start telling them, and then maybe there'll be a chance to go back and tell them what you told them. But hopefully, it'll be more of a give and take at the end here. I think people of your ilk and experience recognize the picture on the left as a fuzzy version of the refinery, which, you know, is now dominated by the green of the Three Crowns Golf Course, but there's still an awful lot of brown around, around that. And then, of course, up on the hill, the Old Tank Farm has had some development, but not nearly as much as I think we ought to be able to generate in the coming years. Currently on the Board, I'm, we're pleased to have Vice Chairman Meld. Dallas, you were on it for a little while, and, you know, I only met you a couple of times just in passing at political events, so I don't expect you remember me, but former mayor and others, so it's like. Silicon Valley. I used to work at Xerox in the early eighties, and we had just amazing video conferencing in the early eighties, and they were predicting we would have paperless offices and ubiquitous video conferencing that was seamless back then. We're still waiting, and I think we all know we're never gonna have paperless offices. So here we are, making the best of it. So as, I hope all of you have had a chance to dine at the Refinery Restaurant, the new branding, and actually, brand-new restaurant, brand-new for now a year, at Three Crowns. I'm pleased to report that in this, well, historically, the deficit that the Three Crowns operations, including the restaurant, have had an annual deficit of between four and five hundred thousand dollars. And in the current year that we're in, driven, let's be candid, in part by mild weather this golf season, which I'm sure you benefited from, and I think that also entered to the benefit of the restaurant. That deficit is almost certainly going to be less than two hundred thousand dollars, so significantly less than half of the historic run rate of the deficit. We see great opportunity for further significant growth. By the way, the restaurant's revenue grew by almost a hundred percent, so more or less doubled. And we see significant opportunities for more growth and frankly, the need for more investment on our part in the restaurant. We've just hired, and it's, it's not public, so I can't give you details, but we've just hired an extremely qualified food and beverage person who has a lot of experience in growing food and beverage operations, both within Casper. He's a Casper native, and he's been managing very successful restaurants, brew pubs, and other establishments outside of town for the last many years. So he recently came back, and we're excited to have him coming on board. On the golf side of things, we've got a number of initiatives going, which we hope and expect over in the next couple of years will require a little bit of capital investment and have a great return. So my mission as a business-oriented, for-profit kind of a guy, is to take the brackets and red letters off of our balance sheet and our, you know, bottom-line results, generate cash and gap profits out of that operation. Even more than that, we have initiatives going to, excuse me, hang on a second, let me make sure I've got, yes, to surpass the level of development that led to the, I can never pronounce autolaryngology quite right, but it's a mouthful and an earful too, I guess, to do the increased development on the Flat River Commons and especially up in the Salt Creek Heights. In that particular area, we are speaking with representatives of Cornerstone and are likely to be able to engage them in helping us market the properties and also search for, across the country, for developers who would hopefully be enticed to partner with us and develop much more of the property than we've had there. We're also working collaboratively with the Parks Department, specifically the City of Casper generally, on an RFP that is just now being inked to hire consultants, and I believe the County Commission is also participating in that financially and has a seat at the table. I know Peter Chairman Nicolason has been involved in that, and the objective is to identify recreation and athletic-based opportunities for development that will also yield financial benefits to the city and the county as a result of that. We believe that, and this is something I've come to reluctantly, that it's gonna be exceedingly challenged to do as much development as I think is warranted for that piece of real estate that runs along the river, which I think is prime real estate. We think it's gonna be challenging to develop that in the near term, and we're going to be working to see if there are, with, in conjunction with the consultants, see if there are, is the ability to have, as I said, recreation-focused development. One of the things I've suggested is that we actually use a lease approach as opposed to selling the property to the city or gifting it to the city to do that. My thinking being, and I'm not a real estate lawyer expert in Wyoming law, but my thinking being that by reserving the right to have a term on whatever that development is, and perhaps do something of more value to the people of Natrona County at a decade from now or some later date, it would be, it would make me very happy to, to generate some serious revenue for the Joint Powers Board and through us, for the county and the city. The current initiatives, the key things that are going on right now that I think are relevant include, got ahead of myself here, sorry about that. It's been a while since I've done PowerPoint and presentations. So we've already talked about, I think, most of those items. I don't think we need to blow the golf course horn. For those of you who are golfers, you know it's a challenging course.
I've got a question real quick.
Yeah.
How do we make it number one?
Ah, you know, that's a question I've talked to Matt Reams, the general manager there.
I've asked him the same thing. I was wondering, I haven't heard from you, what you think.
Yeah, well, to be blunt, I think we have to do a better job of marketing it. I think they've come a long way in terms of the condition of the course, and I think with this restaurant, especially if we get to the next phase of the development that I think is gonna be able to carry the restaurant into the status of Casper's clubhouse, euphemistically speaking, or just, you know, to change it to the sort of place that not just golfers and the occasional diner go to, but it really pulls in a broad spectrum of the community. I think if we are successful at doing this sort of development that is combination of golf and restaurant-focused, we'll have a shot at that. But it comes, a lot of it comes down to marketing. And I have been spearheading some initiatives, including, I was the one who was spearheading along with Matt, the development of the refinery, efforts to get the management company, Landscapes Unlimited, to give him more budget, and then we free up more budget to do more marketing. If you've got any particular ideas, Commissioner, I would love to, love to hear them, or anybody else.
I have a question. Who's the number one course? You say you're two, who's one?
I don't know yet. I mean, I don't remember. I've been told, but I don't remember. I think it's the one at Devil's Tower.
Ben Hewlett.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's it.
One at Sheraton, pretty highly thought of.
Yeah, yeah. I, I should know the answer to that.
You know what one thought is, is to have a primary practice place for the winter. And the primary practice place at your course is where the pro has, where there's that garage down there, and the pro works out of there, gives lessons out of there, you know what I'm talking. Well, the wind is not a factor there.
Yep.
The practice range you have now, every single tidbit of wind gets you right there. And I've often wondered why they don't set up a practice range down on the other end. It'd be pretty convenient, because I think, I think there'd be more revenue. One of the things I've seen with other bigger courses too is they have the land, which I think you guys do.
Yep.
Is they build a closet hut for indoor practicing during the winter. You'd have it packed, according to what some of these golfers tell me that like to keep their game honed all year round. That was just a thought.
Thank you. I think it's an excellent thought, and it's one I've already been engaged with, both Andrew Bradley, the pro that teaches down in the, it looks like a garage, and with Matt Reams, the general manager. And we, we don't yet have consultants engaged, but the notion of creating a virtual golf as well as a, and something that could be both indoors and outdoors. So during the winter, it's indoors, and it, the current thinking is that it would be adjacent to the restaurant, and it could be a driver of food and beverage revenues in addition to more event-oriented things. Those of you who are golfers know- Those of you who are golfers know about Topgolf, which is something that's a real money machine for some golf courses and driving ranges. So I completely agree with and have been talking with the powers that be who know more about these things than I do, Commissioner Laird.
One thing I also wondered about on the driving range that would save a lot of money is if you put pads in there rather than constantly having to maintain the grounds when people tear it up when they're hitting balls. I know a lot of people kind of don't like hitting off pads, the purists. But it is a costly affair when you're moving those tees around and they're grinding up the lawn and you have to replant everything. And you see, you see some of these courses which I've gone to where they have a whole series of pads and then they also have an area, if you pay for it, you can go hit off the grass and
You pay a premium.
Cover the costs of damaging the ground.
Yeah.
I've often wondered if they'd considered that, but I like the idea of something for the winter, close to your, close to your fine new restaurant where people could walk from there in without getting blown clear downtown and have lunch and go out and have more practice.
I'm even envisioning, and those of you who've been in meetings with me know that I, you know, like to dream a little bit and, you know, how can you really move forward without a dream? I completely agree with you. I've been a competitive golfer, not so much now, but in my past. And I think the economics of everything that you just talked about make a lot of sense, including charging a premium to hit off of turf and/or just having the convenience of, you know, not having to hit off turf and being perhaps in a more creature comfortable place than you would be. And certainly during the shoulder and off season, have the option of having the revenue and also you, you bring in youth when you do that. Going back to a theme that got me on the Parks Recreation Advisory Board, you bring in youth and you create golfers of the future. And that brings on the parents who get their beers and their, you know, their other food while the kids are doing that.
You know, and for the, for the people who don't ski, they'd sure love to have an indoor putting green too, which is kind of like, you know, that putt putt golf, but that would be a very popular thing, I think.
Yes, I, I agree. And we've actually had penciled out some ideas about repurposing, you know, some of the, the real estate, the, to make that possible. Having many bays of climate controlled, if you will, opportunities during the off season, especially ones that you could open up and then have, you know, some of them open, some of them closed during the regular season so that people have the kind of choice you're talking about. I think we all know that choice giving people, especially if it's something that they, you know, they realize they want once they see it is a good way to, to make more money. Any other thoughts or comments about, about that? So all of the comments I've heard so far are right in line with the discussions I've been trying to drive, both on the board and with the management company. Going forward, you know, we don't, we've got a lot of experience in having people express interest in the property and for a variety of reasons walk away. The city is one of them. We talked with them a while ago about, slightly before my time, about having a new police station there and that didn't work out. We've been in discussions with them about moving fire station number one right around the corner here down there and can't say whether that's going to work out with them. But we certainly are interested in partnering with the city and because we are, you know, really an entity that is beholden to you and to the city, we think it's important to act like good partners and make rational, reasonable business decisions that keep the real estate cost down and give returns to this people of Casper. So we'll see if that one happens. I already talked about the Platt River Commons Recreation Focus Development. And we're also engaging the Cornerstone folks and hopefully other developers to market, especially up in Salt Creek Heights where there is much, much less contamination that, you know, has, has created impediments in the past along the river. And in fact, in Salt Creek Heights, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we're offered, we are able to offer fee simple property whereas down in Platt River Commons, we're only able to do long-term leases in part because of BP's concern about the pollution that is in the ground and they will forever be responsible for. They, they really take a much harder look at any development down there, which is another reason why we're looking more at recreational development, which could be an avenue for getting BP to actually potentially contribute to some of the development for recreation. Speaking of which, later today, we're having a conference call with representatives of BP. They have a new site manager who is apparently one of their lead engineers and she is going to be joining us here in Casper in February for a site visit and tour. And she has expressed interest in meeting representatives of the city and the commission. So as those details get firmed up, we would expect to be inviting whoever's interested and available from the commission and the city council to join us for lunch and perhaps a bit of a site tour. But it's a new dawn. I've been on, active in the community for over five years now and this will be the first site visit by a BP person since my tenure in, in Casper as a, you know, active community building kind of an individual. So I'm kind of excited about that. They've also
One thing, I don't want to forget this, I did when I was first talking to you, but some ladies have asked me to ask the management, could you put a, and you may have already done this by now, but they would sure like to see a salad bar there in the restaurant where they can come in, get their salad, sit down and eat and be out of there in 20 minutes. They really would like to see that.
Yeah, there's a few issues there, Commissioner. One of them is, to be blunt, at lunchtime, our turn times have varied wildly and sometimes have been very unacceptable. And one of the things I think this new food and beverage manager is going to focus on is exactly that sort of thing. Salad bars are very high margin and, and you, you get to control how long you take as a diner without having to wait for the kitchen. So yes on that and yes on really bringing a focus to much quicker turn times at lunch than has been on occasion happening. Let's see. Consistent with what I was saying about our engagement with BP, we are starting initiatives and one of my regrets that it's taken this long, but starting initiatives to modify the consent decree and the applicable restrictive documents. We've engaged Nick Murdock to help us in crafting proposals to take out some of the most troublesome language or at least come up with new interpretations of some of the most troublesome language that will in, hopefully be able to, will be able to, in the Salt Creek Heights area, get much better traction and faster turn times in reviews by Wyoming Department of Environmental Equality and BP. What else here? So no surprise, I'm here as an emissary trying to engage the commissioners to think of us as your partners. Apropos what I was saying about us working with the city and trying to kind of make it easier for the city to think about developing property or making it easier to get through the permitting process in development of property. We'd like to have your help going forward in those sort of initiatives. And I know there's only so much you can do and we have to go through all the hoops. And first and foremost, we have to be mindful of the obligation to not do any harm to our residents and our visitors. So with that, I think, you know, my informally formal remarks are concluding. And, you know, thank you again for the chance to speak with you and entertain any questions you've got.
Questions for Mr. Tagolia?
How long is your money going to last you?
Depends on how successful I am and we are at, you know, it's, it's really all about Three Crowns and the refinery as part of the Three Crowns.
Do you have any prognosis on that when you may have to ask for county files?
It's my expectation and, you know, take it with a grain of salt because I'm an optimist. My expectation that that day will not come.
Oh, okay.
I think I do see, especially given the traction we've gotten in the last couple of years, I've rolled up my sleeves and taken a harder look and then been successful at getting the refinery and some of the practices of the management company to be improved. And the board, you know, it's not the board that it was when I came in. I think it's proactive and one of the things we talk about is, you know, we're in a race to turn that around. It's a little bit like social security. You know, you can see it coming. If you continue at this run rate, it's going to run out of money. We, it's our obligation, again, as stewards of the assets, including the, we now still have, you know, seven and a half million dollars. You can see it in the public records. You know, that's, if we zero out the deficit, that's a pretty good fund to help take, apply towards some of this development I've been talking about at Three Crowns. And once we get successful, if we do, with the state and the other folks who have created roadblocks, created roadblocks to our selling property, then, you know, I could see that balance sheet starting to grow fairly significantly. If, you know, if Nautrona County continues to prosper the way it has the last few years. So again, I'm an optimist, but I don't think that day is going to come anytime.
Other, other questions for Mr. Tagolia? Jim, with respect to the relocation of Fire Station Number One, was that a contribution or a donation to the city of Casper for that land? Or was there a purchase price associated with it?
There is, we haven't gotten that far, you know, that's, they just had the, you know, the special use tax passed, which is really going to just fund some of the planning for that. And I think we'll be getting into those discussions soon. The possibility of it being a donation or a, you know, below market cost to the city, I think, is, is very high. Apropos my earlier comments and certainly the philosophy of the board at this point is to do what we can to be good, good citizens in every sense of the word.
I, I think that I've heard that there are a couple alternate locations the city's looking at. So, you know, I encourage you guys over on, on your board to try to, you know, move as quickly as possible.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we've heard the same thing and we, we're engaging with the city. And now that the, you know, studies are getting serious and they're getting serious about it. So thank you. Appreciate that.
And I'm glad to hear Mr. Murdock is on board to assist with some of the technical legal issues involved. He's got a wealth of experience in the arena and he's an excellent attorney that I think you, you stand a good chance of getting some accommodations from the state VQ and BP. Because I, I think that, you know, you have to have reasonable requirements to the environmental issues. But I don't think that you can think that there are environmental issues where there aren't. And I, I think that that land varies greatly in terms of where there is significant contamination. And I'd sure like to, a loosening of some of the restrictions where there's not substantial contamination. And, and you know, you tell us that BP, well, that you're allowed to sell fee title to some of the Salt Creek Heights property versus long-term leases on the Bama's area. But, you know, unfortunately, it's not fee title that we see, that we commonly think of. There are all kinds of these restrictions with the consent decree and the covenants that I think are really holding you guys back, so.
I agree completely.
Let us know if this commission can, can help in our, in any discussions with BP or the state.
Great. I would really appreciate the offer, offer of that. You know, one of the things, just apropos that, if I'm out of time, then, you know, I'm happy to move on. But, but one of the things is there's a lot of learning that's happened since the consent decree was signed. And a lot of the science shows that things they thought would be really long-term problems or like mad cow disease was going to infect everybody, you know, just aren't real. And so we're hopeful that in those discussions, we're able to make that case and reduce the barriers. Thank you again for your time and attention and for the offer of help. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in today. We appreciate it.
Appreciate the offer.
And to you, Merry Christmas to all.
You too, Joe.
Next, we are going to visit with our county attorney, Heather Duncan-Balone, for a legal update and agenda review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'll just start with the agenda. Were there any items on the consent agenda that you had any questions on that I can try to address?
Getting through the contract with the I'm just curious, more than anything else, why, why are we only entering into a two-year agreement for the development instead of a longer period?
Let me get to the
It would be section four. I think maybe not. No, section two.
That I can't answer, Commissioner North. I could have Lita come down maybe and, and address that. She was involved with the drafting of this and, and working with IT and the fire district. I, I really can't say why this is a two-year.
Okay. That just seemed like a really short term for, for what we're looking at as far as doing that, so that.
If you'd like, I can
I would appreciate it.
See if I can get her to come on down.
Yeah, that's, I mean, the other, that's the main thing that I was kind of wondering about is just that short, short timeframe.
While we're waiting, were there other questions with respect to consent agenda items? Thank you for coming back.
Commissioner North, I believe, I mean, this contract has been in the works for at least a year. So I'm trying to recall and I did look at my notes. If I recall correctly, it had to do with, if it, I guess, worked out, so to speak, if it worked for both parties. Because this originally started as an RFP process where IT was going to build onto the bay and so forth. And then, then it turned into the, they already had the first room and they wanted to add the second room or utilize the office next to it. That's the best of my recollection. I'm sorry. I can
That's all right.
I'll update you tonight after I stop by and chat with Eileen or come back.
Okay, well, it just, it just seemed like a really short timeframe for putting that kind of effort into something where it's only be a two-year contract, so, or agreement. You know, that's the only reason why I'm asking. It just seemed, it just seemed like if you're going to do something like that, it would have been a little bit longer than, than a two-year, unless we had some other plans.
And it, it does indicate that the lease, well, it states that the lease automatically And it, it does indicate that the lease, well, it states that the lease automatically renews
Right.
For additional two-year terms, so plural. So it could very easily go on unless either party gives 60 days notice of termination. So my, my, my thinking is that perhaps it was, let's allow some flexibility if it's not working, but that the intent is that it is more on the long-term side.
Yes. And I think some of the issues just in general that legals run into, I'm sure as you all know, these leases that renew every, how often, you know, renew, say every 30 days or every year. And then sometimes it slips through the cracks and we end up in a lease for 33 years or something bizarre. So I, I believe that was part of it as well. And I don't anticipate any problems with the partnership at all. I mean, IT already has a room out there. And again, I think it was just to make sure everything worked out to all parties' expectations.
Good. I think you're right. We're going to continue to work together with Fire Protection District forever.
Right.
On multiple issues. So I wouldn't suspect that things will, you know, get off the rails. Commissioner Mill?
Yeah. So Eileen's not sure.
I'm sorry?
Eileen's not sure either.
I'll have to go back through more notes in a more detail.
Potentially the fire district was one of their concerns.
Well, I was going to say the fire district, the board reviewed it, then they sent it to their attorney, then it was set back once. And I can definitely go through my notes more thoroughly than when I heard this come up and I was trying to read.
Yeah. Looks like she doesn't have a concern about it. That, you know, she's satisfied with the contract as is. So.
Right. And I believe their attorney is as well because, and the board, because they signed off on it and asked to tweak a couple of things.
So I don't know if I'd worry about it too much.
Is there any? Well, Commissioner North, you want this to be held up tonight, pulled from the consent agenda?
No, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just had a question about it.
Sure.
You know, and that's one of those things, if we go through yours and we can address it later on if we need to. I just thought that was a very short timeframe.
It's a unique.
For putting something like, especially like IT, that's something that's a very short timeframe for doing that. So that was the reason why I was asking.
Sure. And I'll look through my notes again. So when we reconvene, I will let, if I can find any notes on it, we have a lot of drafts. So we can do that. It's definitely a reasonable question.
Okay. Yeah. Just reading through it, that just, you know, that's something that two-year timeframe is not, not very long. So especially in today's world.
Yes.
So, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I released now? Thank you. I know. I should have sat in that one so I could get a good feel for him. Thank you.
Heather, I don't think we have other questions on the consent agenda items. I, I am aware that there is a, a vacation coming up in February. We have the report on, this is what's on the consent agenda for tonight. It is merely to keep the process moving ahead. And this is a statutory precondition, right?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Yeah.
So any other legal updates? I guess we can move into that.
I was, I really don't have anything on my list to discuss unless of course there's questions that any of you have on some of our outstanding projects and issues that I could try to address. But I, I, nothing came to mind for me to
I don't have anything for open. I have some for exec.
Okay. And, and I do too, a legal advice matter. And so we'll hold off on that till five o'clock. Are we going to need more than a half an hour of executive session tonight? Or do you know?
I don't know. I, I don't know. The, the first item, I'm uncertain how long that will take.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll obviously play that by ear. I don't know if you have a biathlon club update that you can share with us at this point or not, but that was one of those pending issues?
It, it is. The, I believe that you're going to approve the payment to the, to the club for last year's grooming fees this evening. I have reached out to Mr. Holsher, haven't heard back, just to see what the status of some of the improvements that need to be made that were recommended by the building department. And then I think he's got the, the most recent draft agreements also. So that, that's really the update. I haven't heard any news from, from Mr. Holsher recently.
Okay. Other items for open session with our council?
As far as our road evaluations, our county roads, as far as looking at them to make sure that we have everything recorded.
Oh, we've, we've identified, I think, two that we would like to try to move forward with after the first of the year. And then there are others on, on the list that Mike has, has recommended the, you know, going or investigating, but probably about five of those to start with. And then we'll, we'll move on down the list of, of the roads that have issues.
Okay. Just, just so you're aware, I know that there's at least one, maybe two bills that are being proposed for next year in reference to where our county roads go through state school sections. As far as getting the county, the state to cover the cost on that centerline survey. So I don't know exactly, I can't remember who's bringing up what, but I know there's at least one and possibly two bills down there to cover some of that stuff. So find out more about that next month, I guess. So did want to let you know about that.
Thank you.
Last call for Heather. Thank you. We'll talk more in executive session.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roundtable is next. Commissioner Laird?
I don't have any comments.
Roundtable items, Commissioner North?
We had a good winter session up in Buffalo this last week with the WCCA. And it was kind of interesting because one of the things we were discussing was industrial siting. And something that I found out is that Kerbin County is actually requesting or requiring, not requesting, but they actually require the applicant to go through the industrial siting process prior to getting their permit from the county. And then anything that's not covered, they can, they can add on as far as road improvements, road use, or anything that's associated with it. I know that's not quite the way the DEQ prefers to do it, but they are receptive to it. And that, that may be something that we need to look at in, in the future. Another thing that I've, that was top of conversation up there was that there's a proposed hydrogen plant in Goshen County that, I think it was Goshen County, it may have been Nyerboro, I can't remember. But it presents new issues that we haven't necessarily thought about in the past. So that's something that we need to, need to start looking at all this, all the different items as far as what we're doing. So I'll get with you later on Heather and we can talk about some of that stuff. But I think that's, I, I think those are items that we really need to seriously look at as far as with our zoning to make sure that we're covered in case something happens, that one of those projects comes here. So we actually have something on, on file.
You, that might be one, Commissioner North, to invite Deputy Attorney Holbrook, also planning supervisor, temporary guy, and, and maybe even ECS to take kind of a 30,000-foot view and then drill down on specifics as necessary.
Yep. I do have one other thing that I wanted to bring up.
Go ahead.
We did discuss the congressional tour for next year. According to MICA, we're already way ahead of where some of the groups have been in the past, which is good news. So we need to think about what areas we want to take these congressional staffers to, to show them. And it sounds like what we're going to do is get a half day on both ends of the spectrum. So we're going to split it up so we won't have, have a straight 24 hours here. We'll have one afternoon and then one morning to get things done. So we need to kind of start thinking about what we want to do and how we want to do that as far as splitting that up and what we can take them to and, and show.
Thank you. Commissioner Freel?
The only thing I have today is in 2023, this commission wrote a letter of support for Mountain West Communications to obtain a grant, which they successfully did and were able to service 98 residents in rural Northeast Wyoming with broadband. And so they're asking again, they're going for a second round or another round of grant funding. This time this would service up in the area of Evansville, Coal Creek, Antelope Hills, Midwest and Edgerton. So they're asking again for another letter from the commission in support of them for this grant. So just want to pass that on.
Did they circulate a written request for that or has, did we get it to Michelle yet?
I just got it in an email, my personal email to Dave Brooke Rochelle, and she gave me a copy of well, of an example letter that they're sending us. So I'll get that to Michelle.
Yeah. If you'd circulate that, Michelle, that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, Michelle, do you remember, was that company specific or just in general that we supported the?
Yeah. Because we, because this calendar year, we modified, we tweaked the language on one of those so that we were supportive of the program. But we didn't, we were a little cautious about picking winners and losers. And so that's why I wanted to look at the language. I'm not sure we need to change it, but we sure will need to look at it.
But yeah, they reached out to me to support, their support for the, that effort.
But there are others.
But there's other considerations.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks, Commissioner Freel. We'll, I, I think we can certainly support an effort to do that. How, what the letter actually looks like, we'll work through that in the days to come. Mr. Mill? Do you have anything else, Steve? Okay.
Regardless if he has anything else or not.
Here's your turn. Okay.
Short timer. Uh, let's see. Had the meeting this morning with manager, department heads. Just run over a couple of highlights with you on a few of the different things that they're doing with IT. They're working with the coroner for the digitizing of their records. That's progressing well. She had a meeting today, this morning on it as well. Road and Bridge, they're sending, going to be sending out the letters here shortly for the road correction that's, that's going on in that area for Squaw Creek. So you may hear about that here shortly from concerned people. Voting machine building, Tracy's building. You got an office out there too for how much this thing's costing? No doubt. Anyways, be about 104K for design and up for the building. Going to try to come up with the funds elsewhere other than the tribal for the architecture and then go start using the art, the tribal for the actual building. Maintenance. They're going to have to, they're running 240 for a washing machine that the sheriff's office bought. Currently it's set up for 480. So they're going to have to pull those permits and whatnot. It's only, it's a short run, but they're having to do a little bit of workaround because that. The foundation is started on columbarium. They should, he's going to have to get the crane set up, organized and scheduled, and it should be approximately the seventh for the setting of that columbarium. Legal, you, you talked about that already, I believe, about as far as not hearing back from Holsher on biathlon for the building code on the electric. Permitting and a client right now is kind of static. They're going to be calling for inspections for their maintenance building and other final inspections shortly. But right now they're kind of static. He talked a bit about the airport and with the maintenance building expansion and it's the building problems that they're having a little bit with permitting and whatnot and trying to find some workarounds for that. So you're probably aware of that. They haven't had any applications for the inspector position. So Danielle's going to increase the, or upgrade the advertisement to try to find somebody. The state just hired a few, city hired one. So we were competing with all them. Hopefully we should get, start getting some more again. Parks, the weather station's been installed and is online up on the mountain. I just took a look at it. It's working rather well, it looks like. The parking at the lodge is still blocked off for right now, but it should be open for the high school tournaments coming up. And that's about it.
Very good. Thank you. I, I met with a number of people in the last few weeks. The city of Casper would like to get together with us to appointed commissioner members in January to kick off that, that effort and provide some structure and talk about the, the fifth member of that, that committee. So two of us will need to be ready to meet in January for that. I would like to see a, a public dedication, small ceremony type thing when we get the columbarium set. I don't know if we want to do that immediately. I guess I would open it up for roundtable discussion on what the sentiments would be for some sort of ceremony. I kind of envision, you know, members of council, members of this commission, our coroner, someone from the faith community, I think. I'm not sure exactly, you know, who that would be or, or which faith community. But, but I'd like to have a nice ceremony. I think we've done this the right way to put the columbarium in there. And I think it's something that we need to be, that we are proud of and we need to celebrate. Any ideas for what you gentlemen would like to see for a dedication ceremony?
Warm weather.
Are you saying wait until?
No, I'm being facetious. I mean, we all, we never know what we're going to get. I mean, we could have bad weather no matter what day we have between now and July. I'm not real sure. I haven't really thought about that too much. So but I am glad that we're moving forward. I'm glad that we've got the base taken care of and everything else. So at least, I, I guess one thing I would ask is we could do the dedication though when it is a little nicer outside. I mean, we don't necessarily have to do it when we said it, do we?
No, we don't, don't need to do it when we said it, but I think that's what the discussion is, is do you want to do it? You know, shortly after we, we put it there. I mean, you know, ordinarily I think we could do it whenever. But in this case, if we're talking about putting remains, human remains in, in something that I think I would like to see that dedication before the first remains go in. Now I can coordinate with our, our coroner a little bit on that and see what the timing looks like there. He has an alternative for cremains, but my feeling My feeling is it ought to be done before cremains are being interred.
No, that that was one of my points is that we need to do it prior to internment. Of anybody into the cream or the columbarium. Um, obviously we need to do it at Graveside. And then, I don't know, get a, get one of the firemen play pipes. As well as your faith, somebody to dedicate it.
Commissioner Friel?
You know, to what he, what you both just said, I I agree. I think it should be dedicated prior to putting any remains in there and. So I'd say the sooner the better and just leave it up to you as to who you choose to do the dedication itself.
I'll work with the coroner and see if, you know, if he'd like to be more involved or just show up. Um, if he'd like to be more involved, then um, you know, let, give him some rain to. Work with Michelle and and us to kind of put together, put together something and I'll, I'll of course talk to him about timing too. Um, I've also been talking to Michael Brown about a dedication slash opening ceremony. For the Nordic Trail Center. The building, I think, is going to substantial completion, targeting January twenty-fifth. Um, it may be end of January, but it's not too far uh down the road. And so Michael's giving some thoughts to what that might look like. The question again is, when do we need to do that? Do we need to do it before the opening of the building for users? I I don't think we have to for that. I'd kinda like to see it done while there's um. Snow up there and and Nordic activity up there, even though it's more of the Casper Mountain Trail Center, not the Nordic Center, but. Um, so I, you know, that could be done in conjunction with other events or. Um, it could be a separate, separate event. Uh, the only thing is we're kinda talking about trying to find a Saturday. Um, so that maybe more, you know, folks that have to work, uh, more members of the community could go up there and and be a part of that. So opening that up for round table in terms of timing or what you gentlemen would like to see, um, thoughts, ideas?
I agree that we ought to do it before, while we still have snow up there, but unfortunately, we have no idea how long that's gonna be. Near to here or so. Um, I would like to see everything completed before we do with our. Legislative. Stuff down at the end in Cheyenne at the end of January. I think that's gonna obviously push it off into. February at some point in time, but uh. Maybe even the first March. So. I would, I'd like for us to wait a little bit longer and just kinda make sure that everything's, they got the. List all finished, their punch list all finished up and everything's ready to go before we do it. So. Sometime in March at the latest point, so get it before everything starts to melt and turns in. Turns a little wet up there. So that that would be my recommendation.
Okay, um. I met with the library board or some of the members of the library board and a number. I think most of the members of the library foundation board. Um, the director of the library, um, members of the city council. And the city manager, they, there was kind of a joint meeting. The plan initially was for them to come to us. To discuss the land swap for the source gas and where the current health department building is. With the land the foundation currently owns. Um, give us an update, make a pitch and see if they could move forward. Um, including with county financial support, um, consistent with what we talked about um a year ago last October. I received a, an email from the library that they are um. Not wanting to meet at this um, toward the end of January or in early February. Um, it sounds like the um swap may be um either off the table or is not. Um, active. So my, my feeling is that we're not gonna move forward on that in. Um, in the next few months, but I I'll let you know what else I hear. Uh, I visited with the city about the um, their facility study, which was done in twenty twenty. Um, it was about eighty-six thousand dollars in twenty twenty. I have their RFP and I've talked to Garrett and we'd like to set up a meeting with a couple commissioners in in January. Um, to kind of look at what the priorities might be for a facility study. Um, and maybe even talk about the scope of the request for a proposal. Um, to then get in front of this commission just for um more of a round table discussion. But all of it would be for the idea of if we're gonna do it, then we ought to have it in our budget next fiscal year. And that's all gonna take time to put together so that that could potentially move forward and get funded uh next. Next fiscal year. Uh, so that's the update there. Um, with respect to the congressional tour, we had a good productive meeting. We've had some good productive meetings. Um, Carbon County is the, gonna be the lead, just so you know the final answer on that. Um, they're gonna fly in and out of Casper, uh, most, most likely. I mean, this isn't set in stone. But everybody's kind of in agreement that the loop would go um, would start in Casper and like Commissioner North said, we'll probably only have. Um, a half a day. We might talk about, or we might. Look at airport um operations. Um, that includes the. Um, kind of federal nexus of it being a customs um facility, also the free trade zone. Also, um, a regional firefighting um base, also receiving the state helitack award. Um, yeah, there's a lot going on out there and in a, in a good, um, in a good way. So I think we could show that off. Talked about potentially um. The Bureau of Reclamation, the Kendrick Projects, the um, North Platte River. Some of those things would be um good. They might even be on the way out of town. Or the way back into town, depending upon um the loop. Talked about a possible gun range tour. You know, it's, it's not for congressional members, it's for their staff who um really are targeted by WCCA. Because they don't have a lot of familiarity with western Wyoming uh land issues and other um. You know, things uh going on out here in the west. So uh, we will probably in the next um month. Need to dial that in a little bit more. So reach out to Dave or I if if you have ideas. Dave, anything you wanna add to that? I think between the two of us, we covered most of it.
I think we did. Um, we did have a really good meeting and I think, I think all the counties are pretty excited about this. The one thing that they did say was, next time around, we need to think about how much time we have. Cause we got the four biggest counties in the state right now. So um, that's gonna make it a little bit harder for us to get around. But I, I, I do think it's gonna be, I think it's be, gonna be a lot of fun and.
We, we, we might likely want to have a widely attended community event, either. Um, a welcoming or a goodbye um dinner. Um, that could uh be sponsored if we go out and find some sponsors. I think we could. Um, that is pretty customary to have one or the other and maybe sometimes both. And I think um we'd be well suited here in the county. Um, to to put together a party. So um, we'll, we'll talk more on that. And if you wanna know what the other counties are talking about, including, just so you know where we might have overlap or we might not. Um, you know, where we might not need to because it's being covered by another county, you can ask Dave or I, we have. Um, a tentative um. Uh, list of of some of the things people are talking about. Dave, you looked like you wanted to jump in.
I was just gonna tell Michelle, WCCA is gonna help out a lot on this. So I just wanted to let you know that right up front is that uh. And, you know, all the bills will go through. Carbon County, so everything's gonna be paid for that way. So we won't have to worry about any of that portion of it. So it's just a matter of. Setting up the biggest thing we gotta look at is uh, it, they preferred to have fewer stops. With more information instead of a whole lot of small stops, but just a little bit because those little stops take a lot longer than you think they will. You just don't get nearly as much accomplished that way. And a lot of the conversation that we can have is actually on the bus. So when we're going, moving them from here to Fremont County, we've got two hours. Of captive audience and we can talk about different things and do different things. So that's kind of the game plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Commissioner North or all fellow commissioners, um, if we're talking about any sponsorship or for a dinner or whatnot. I'd like to um kinda get going on that as quickly as possible and kinda get a game plan. I'd rather be ahead of this than behind it. So, um, Michelle and I will. Uh, accept any request or any uh ideas. We would love any ideas and so any help from you guys would be greatly appreciated.
The good part about this is not until the first week in August. So we do have at least a little bit of time to to get things working.
Sure, thanks.
And we'll know more, um, I think January sixth is our next. Uh, meeting, whatever that Friday or maybe it's the tenth. It's, it's on a Friday. We'll, we'll talk some more and and we'll certainly let you know. I was contacted by the city of Mills mayor. Uh, there's a concern about the West Belt Loop Road safety and especially at the Robertson Road intersection. Um, we've been informally asked to work um or to consider working with them. To uh try to improve um traveling public safety. Um, at that intersection in particular, um, and I think maybe down where the big D. Um, intersection is, but I know primarily it, it might be adding a de-acceleration lane. And trying to get YDOT um onboard. It sounds like uh YDOT has been. Um, telling folks that it's a, it's a speed enforcement issue. Um, not anything else. And so I wanted to open that up for round table discussion too. Um, see if there's just general comments or if there's an interest in um working with the city of Mills on the issue.
That's a dangerous intersection. There's been a lot of people that have already been killed there over the years, you know, and then they. For a long time, they didn't even have lights there. Now they have, they do have night lights in there. They sort of, YDOT sort of put a turn lane in, but it's not a very good one. I did speak with Leah about this a little bit and one of the things I have concerns about is when those trucks are coming over the top of the hill. Um, it's not so bad when they're coming into town, but when they're coming over the top of the hill. See about dropping that speed limit down, you know, instead of be, being fifty-five. Um, then maybe something for that short amount of time, just leave it at forty or forty-five. But there is a problem there. That is a dangerous intersection in the way it's set up. I know when I go across it, which is quite often. I look about four times before I pull out because they're just a, on there going really fast and it is. It is a dangerous intersection and it has been ever since they put it in.
So is there any reservation or hesitation to work with Mills on this? Commissioner Mill?
So YDOT was supposed to have done a study on it and that they said they do. We got unofficially, I haven't officially, I haven't heard anything. I'd like to hear from YDOT, what they, what their study reflected back with. We talked about it a little bit and I forgot, I got busy with other things. Need to give them a call maybe and have them come in and chat with us a little bit before we start getting.
We take a position?
Yeah.
Ms. Morris indicated that the. Tr- recent YDOT traffic study concluded excessive speed was the only contributing factor to accidents. Um, and recommendation to enforce speed limits. I haven't seen that traffic study. I think we should. Um, and I think we should continue conversations with with YDOT and Mills and um others to see what can be done. Whether we wanna take a position. Commissioner Friel?
We did have this uh portion of conversation at the government, governor's breakfast or government breakfast. And um, my understanding was out of that report from YDOT is that they did their traffic study. There's not enough volume. Going through there to warrant any signals or anything else, putting it up and or being put up at that intersection. And so it did come down to more enforcement on the road itself, but nothing else.
So they didn't say, they didn't talk about uh speed reduction then? Cause I think if it was reduced by a little bit, just right there before. Down the hill a little bit from that intersection and continuing all the way to light at the intersection. If it was reduced to forty-five, it helps significantly.
Not sure about speed reduction. I know speed enforcement would part of it itself, but it did not. Did not have enough traffic volume going through there to warrant any lights or anything like that. That's my understanding for what she said from the report.
Thanks.
There will be a another um mental behavioral health task force um meeting in January. I can't remember. For the exact day. Let me know. I'm gonna attend that. Uh, let me know. Um, if any of you would also like to attend it and I can. Well, if you'd read your emails. How about this? How about I get back with y'all? I'll send you an email. Yeah, it'd be from Anna Kinder.
Yeah, that was just.
Okay, um, that's all I had uh or had a need to uh bring to the table at this time. So I think with that, we will adjourn until our five o'clock um regular session meeting.